...Lambert County.
He's getting to more people.
Oh, he's getting to more people, so hang on one second. And Anthony, you can get somebody on my phone, too.
Are you good, Ted?
Ask him if he mutes himself because somebody wasn't muting the other day. Unless they speak.
Kathy?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, Kathy, we can't hear you. And for the record, I want you to show that I'm here, please.
All right.
Patsy.
Patsy, okay. She can't hear us.
So Patsy's on with us, Keith.
Okay.
I think it's those that have the low voice or don't speak.
I think that that's what he's trying to do.
Patsy, do you hear me fine?
I think that that's one of the things she said is she can't hear us.
I don't know, it keeps dropping the calls.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm gonna try one more time, if I drop it, I'm just gonna keep Ted on.
So we need a system like the community room?
We've been working on it, yeah, a system.
Calling in instead of calling out. Nobody wants to sit in the center? Don't be shy.
It keeps dropping, I'm just gonna get Ted until we get the A. Okay, it's you, it's just you, okay? Okay, all right.
Green, turn your button on. We're gonna go ahead and call to order the Lander County House Board meeting, March 19th, 2020, Lander County Courthouse, Commissioner Chambers. Some of these calls are gonna be via teleconference, so we're going to get policy meeting to order, and we'll do the ple- ple- when you.
To defy the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and have a moment of silence. All right, we're gonna move forward. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, maybe can be defined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda. Public comment, for non-agendized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend, make comments on any non-agendized item at the board meetings, if any. And discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on the public comment based upon time, place, and manner, but no public comment based upon viewpoint may be restricted. All right, moving on. Is there any public comment to begin with? For possible action to receive update, to fully discuss, to appoint a medical expert, and to create a countywide action plan concerning the coronavirus outbreak within Lander County.
So currently, our community health nurse is home sick. It looks like it's just the flu, we can't, I can't get her on the phone, it just keeps dropping it. So, little update of what we're doing here within the county. We have put in place food delivery for the seniors. We have people from the rec center that have moved over, they're helping to cook at the rec center. The building department is out delivering food to the seniors. We have people from the rec center over here doing the janitorial duties due to the fact that our janitors are home currently. Several of the offices have employees working from home right now. We have limited access from, between the public and our employees. We're keeping all that in check very well, within this building here, at this time. And I don't know if there's any questions related to where we're at with that, or not?
Keith, I need to make a statement.
Go ahead, Ted.
Commissioners, the NRS 439280 states that each county will establish their health board to consist of the board of county commissioners, the chair, and the county health officer. So there are seven, it's a seven-member board. The county health officer shall act as chair. I just want, since she is unable to be there, you need to procedurally declare, Kathy, if you're gonna take on that role, you need to put that on the record. Because you're acting as chair, because the county health officer is not present, please.
All right, now, is that just, can be done just for this meeting, that I act as chair?
Pardon me?
Kathy's asked if, is that just for this meeting, at this one time?
The county health board, it's for any meeting in the county health board.
But this is just a one-time thing? Just for this meeting, and then next time, it'll go back to the?
County health officer.
To the county health officer.
All right.
Yes.
All right, so I'm just speaking.
So, we need a motion then, to?
Motion?
Yes.
Motion to appoint-elect Kathy Anchoa as chair for this meeting of the Lander County Health Board.
One second.
Aye. Keith, you gotta get a little.
Ron gets the vote.
Aye.
Oh, Ron gets the vote.
Yeah, well, all right, are we ready to move forward?
Yes.
All right, so with it, number one being read into... What are, where are we going now?
Okay, so what I'd like to do is invite the superintendent of the school to come up and give his update to the commissioners, if you would please, Russ, thank you.
For the record, Russ Klein, Superintendent. As you're aware, the governor issued a three-week order closing the school buildings. The first week was given for the schools to go in a transitional stage to prepare, to go to a distance learning model, and then the next two weeks will be a distance learning model. What we've done at the district is, our number one priority was to get food to the kids, so we've been serving food meals at the junior high. Because it's designated as more than 50% free and reduced lunch area, we don't have to take names, we only have to count numbers, and we'll be able to get reimbursed for those. The first day, we initiated on Tuesday, we served 118 meals, and the second day was 445, I think, something like that. We've been issuing two sacks, one is a breakfast, one is a lunch. So it's half that many students with two meals each. We did it again today, and had the 450 range again today. Starting Monday, we're adding bus routes, and we're taking food via the bus routes to all of our kids. So we've sent a robocall out saying, between 10:00 and 11:00 o'clock, same time that the pickup is here locally, the buses will run their runs, they'll be in the big yellow bus, so kids watch for the bus coming. But between that hour and whether the parents are home or not, we're hoping to get it to every child who needs the food. So, that's what's been initiated with food, with the buildings. We've had teachers in the buildings, anyone, any students who don't have internet access, we've gone to paper packets, teachers have created packets, two, three weeks out of work for them to do. Both the elementary and the high school are making those packets available Monday morning. All of this is in a drive-up mode, where no one gets out of the car, just hand it to them through the window. And then, the junior high, because they're a one-to-one, they've been, they've been much more able to just go to an online mode, so they're, they're operating pretty fluidly with what they've been doing anyway. Anyone, again, that does not have internet access, we're making it available. We're taking a weekly run out to Crescent Valley to deliver homework packets out there, and we're running food out to Dunphy. I'm not sure if that's gonna be a weekly or a daily run out there, but all the other food runs will be a daily run. So that's pretty much, I think, where the district stands. So we've gone through the first week of the transition, and then I am, basically have directed everyone to lock down the school buildings beginning Monday. Even the principals may be working at home. If teachers need to get into the building to make phone calls, to make copies, it will be at the direction and in coordination with the building principal. We're basically considering the building secure and protected, and so we're calling it good. Lock the doors and keep it that way until we're ready to bring kids back in.
That's just awesome, Russ.
Thank you.
What you're doing, and the distribution and the coordination.
The, we, the teams have jumped in on board, teachers have stepped up. It's, it's been just really, I mean, just touching to see the staffs step up, and everyone has risen to the occasion. So, our number one concern, I've asked the teachers to have, that every student is contacted by someone every day. We started an online Google Doc where teachers are sharing, I have two different documents, one is celebrations and one is innovations. So teachers are sharing different innovations, they're using some of the apps and software, ClassDojo, things like that. They're sharing successes. One mom posted the chart of school with hard knocks and her schedule throughout the day of at 8:00, at 9:00, at 10:00, I mean, and, and so they've, they've shared these ideas with each other, celebrations, and we're really looking to just share what people have done. Kristen Spring, one of our instructional aides, started an online build-a-forth competition, where everyone is, is, they get to build their fort, post their pictures online, they'll have voting for it. And so, it's really, we're trying to keep community in a virtual way.
Well, and get their, keep their minds off of everything else that's going on.
And keep them occupied, and something to do, and connected, and more, sort of made anything connected.
So I do have a question for you. So our Governor Sislak has stated 30 days for nonessential businesses, whatnot. And I would think that initially, the school wasn't 30 days, but you'll be totally prepared and supplied if it extends beyond April 6th?
And that's an excellent question, that's a concern the teachers have had, is are we essential or nonessential? And, because that, that really was. But just this morning, we got clarification from the Department of Ed that differentiated and said, the governor's three-week building school closure is still in effect for education, the 30-day closure for everything else is, that those are two separate and apart. And so the declaration and expectation for schools, which goes through, as you know, April 6th, that is still in effect. But we are absolutely gearing toward, in my mind, I don't wanna get personal, but I think it's gonna be well beyond that.
And you could be prepared.
The state of Kansas has canceled school through the end of the year.
Kathy? Will you be prepared?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
You will be prepared for that?
We are, we are, we are setting up to be prepared for just that.
Kathy?
Yes.
Yes, can't wait, dear, I have a question for us.
Okay.
Could you just clarify how the Austin school is doing this?
Yes, we've, I've been in touch, Shawna Mayby is our teacher down there, Michelle James is the custodian. They've been in touch with every family, we offered to send food down on a weekly basis to do the same food service for them. They actually serve food down there, they've been in touch with every family down there, and their food service is set, and she's doing the same thing with online connection for the students.
I'm a bit confused, we haven't, we haven't had students down here.
We weren't able to hear you, Patsy.
They haven't had students down there?
They haven't had students down there?
Oh, is that? Oh, food.
Food, they haven't had food down there.
I had a communication directly with the teacher, and she said every family was offered and that they did not request anything from us. So if you know of any circumstances where that's not applicable, we will absolutely provide it. We are prepared to do that.
So I just wondered, if she was, if she had all the class stuff put together, that was for children?
Patsy, could you repeat that slowly, please?
Yeah, I would just clarify, the instructions, if she put pamphlets, shirts, did she deliver them to you?
We can't, we can't hear you.
The instruction pamphlets, were they delivered to the students?
Maybe, Patsy, if you're on speaker, if you might take it off speaker and see if that changes anything?
If we take it off, the speaker's gonna hang up.
Oh, she's on the phone, she must be on the phone.
Oh, okay.
Sit back from the speaker a little bit?
She was asking if the packets, the lesson plans were delivered.
Oh, the packets and lesson plans were delivered.
Yes.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for?
Does anybody have any questions?
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Russ.
Appreciate it.
Keep up the good work, that's great.
So do we have any more public comment?
Maybe the hospital can give an update, Jason's prepared. We'll do that, please.
Absolutely.
You ready?
Okay. All right, Jason Blake, for the record. I didn't know that I was gonna be speaking, but I just kinda got a, got feelings, so I wrote a couple things down. We had a good board meeting last night, hospital board meeting. We did it kinda like what you're doing, virtual and in-person, we screened everybody coming in to make sure that they were safe to be in the meeting. And we were fortunate last night to have almost all of our medical staff in attendance at the meeting. So they were able to ask questions and answer questions, and give quite a good wealth of knowledge about what we are doing at the hospital, how we're responding, and what the outlook is for the future. I'm not prepared to regurgitate, all that was, was shared last night, but I want to make sure everybody knows that we are not closed, but we have taken precautions so that we can try to keep the virus away from employees and away from long-term care, and kind of isolate it in the areas that it currently resides. And so as such, we have, we have initiated a screening and assessment process that is out in the front of the clinic, kind of to the side and back, also for the emergency room. And the EMS is prepared to do a screening from the home as they go into a scene there. We are following CDC and Department of Public and Behavioral Health guidelines in trying to keep the social distance, so that we can get this thing taken care of. Our long-term care is closed down, it's locked down, even for my employees. Only essential employees are allowed to go into the long-term area, for obvious reasons. There's a very high death rate among the elderly, and when they reside so closely together, we're, we're really trying to keep this out. Now, there is an exception, sorry. If somebody is actively dying right there at the end stages, we're going to allow family to come in, maybe not the whole family, but a few in intervals after we do some screening. And so we are, are working with that. We are also working with our IT program, so that family and friends of the residents in the long-term care facility can use a technology called VC, VSEE. It's a free app on your phone, we're getting it plugged in so that family and friends can call and speak face-to-face with, with their loved ones in the nursing home, so that they can continue to enjoy life. Probably one of our biggest concerns is protective, personal protective equipment. Gloves, masks, goggles, gowns, things like that. Nationwide, worldwide, they're going under shortage. We do have an inventory, but it continues to get smaller and smaller each day, and we're not able to replace it as quickly as we use it. And so we are protecting and managing our PPE as closely as possible. We are expecting a shipment in today from the state, but we've also been told that if our inventories get really low, we can work with the county emergency manager to put in some emergency requisitions. We remain confident, and with smiles on our face, and with great hope. And we hope to exude confidence and comfort to all those that come our way. We are prepared, and we are gonna do the best that we can to care for this and to care for the people as kindly and as gently with, with care and compassion. And so, Dr. Wilcourt is here, he's one of our medical directors, do you have anything to add?
No, I think I'd like to make it.
I'm sorry, Dr. Wilcourt, you do need to come up and state your name.
Robert Wilcourt, hello there, physician at Battle Mountain General Hospital. Anyone got any particular questions, or would you like me to continue?
Go ahead, continue, please.
Okay, so, what we're trying to get the message through to people is that the best thing we can do in these circumstances is to stay away from everybody and stay home. If anyone's developing a respiratory illness, runny nose, all the sort of signs that you think you might be getting a cold, people really should be self-isolating at this moment, because we've got no way of knowing whether or not they are carriers for COVID-19. One of the big issues that we're facing across the nation and the world is that immediate testing kits are just not available. It takes a while to manufacture these things, and I'm actually stunned at the pace at which we're moving. I've never seen anything like it. In past epidemics, we've never seen movement this quick. So, when they're available, we'll be able to get the rapid tests, just like you're used to when you're going in for strep throat, we can tell you within two or three minutes whether you have that. We can do that with influenza A and B, we can do it with RSV, which is another virus that attacks kids mostly, but it does adults as well, and we've just seen that passing through our community. So we can do those tests, and so what we're, what we're trying to do in order not to waste the media that we have, that we put the throat and nose swabs in, because we've only got a few of them. We've got to be very selective who gets tested. So we test everybody for the four main ones that I just mentioned, they're rapid tests. We can have those done very quickly, you could even sit in your car if you wanted to, and wait for the results of that test. If the person's symptoms are such that they appear to really have a very serious flu, and they test negative for the four that I just mentioned, they are absolute candidates for getting the swab sent to Reno, to the labs in Reno for screening for COVID-19. Hopefully, the rapid test will come online sooner than later, but it might still be a month to six weeks out. And if we're very lucky, this might have blown through by then, and the need for it may have lessened dramatically. But that's where we are. So if somebody calls the hospital now, they will be asked a number of questions, screening questions. We're not, we don't want the elderly in this community, many of whom have respiratory diseases, as you know, COPD is very common here in this community. We don't want them to come into the hospital. So we're filling prescriptions for people that we would normally see, that they'd have to come in and get a prescription, we're actually telling them, stay home for whatever the foreseeable future for this threat is, we'll fill the prescriptions, and they don't have to come in contact with potential candidates. Because obviously, the great melting pot for this thing is gonna be in the healthcare center. So the emergency room is number one priority, that's where the sickest people will be. So we wanna keep healthy people and the elderly out. So it might seem like we don't want, we don't wanna see people, that's not true. We want you to be healthy, but we can, I think we can deliver a lot of those services while people are still at home. So we wanna get that message loud and clear out there, we're not closed, we are treating everybody. If you came in with symptoms like appendicitis, you'd get treated and seen, just as you would under other circumstances. So, I think that's the positive message.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
There's a theory that this virus has been in the United States since October and January. What do you think about, I know we talked about this the other day, I just, you know, I'm just gonna ask you a couple of questions.
The problem is, we have no way of knowing, because China clearly didn't tell us the truth about when it was there. It's now believed, it may well have originated at around mid-November or early November, in Wuhan. We just don't know. One thing we do know is that for every one person who has obvious symptoms, there may be six others who are asymptomatic, and that is the real problem. So we don't know what the, what the actual death rates are. You know, they, they may actually turn out to be way less than currently appear, because we have to base people with the severest illness and death on the people we recognize as actually having the disorder. But if there are six other people for every person who has it, then it means the actual number of people infected in this country may be absolutely massive. We're not gonna know this for a while, unfortunately.
Would you, would you explain to everyone about the mutation issue in China because of the way they live?
You're talking about with this virus, or how all the, every time we have?
Yes.
A so-called Asian flu? The traditional means by which these viruses have originated in China, because probably everyone asks, why is it always China? Is that the populace of Canada geese traveling across to Asia every year brings bird flu. Those birds get in contact with the ducks and geese and the pigs, that many of the Chinese farmers have in very close proximity to where they actually physically live, sleep, and eat. And those viruses transmute through each of those species. So the birds give it to the pigs, and the pigs mutate it, and the humans get it, and then it spreads around the world. So coronavirus is a big group of viruses, very common, they're responsible for the ordering coughs and colds, as well as MERS and SARS, and obviously this one. But that's what happens, so if China would only do what we all do with our farms, we don't sleep with our animals or have that much close proximity to them, this wouldn't happen. So hopefully, over time, as their hygienic practices improve, we will see this sort of nonsense not happening. Because obviously, MERS was the most scary thing, I don't know if you know, that was the Middle Eastern Respiratory Syndrome, same, same group of viruses, same, same family, 60% death rate. So had this taken off like that, we'd be having a very different conversation today.
One last thing, right before I left home, on the news, they said that 20% of the people that went on spring break in Florida, between the ages of 20 and 44, will have this virus. This will cause a big s-. This will cause a big spike, won't it?
Most likely, unless those people take the advice and go home and self-isolate, um, it could be a massive problem. There are two things, I guess today you've heard in the news, that both chloroquine and remdesivir are two drugs, um, which are being looked at as possibly being able to ameliorate this. And the US has actually offered China a whole lot of the, uh, remdesivir, uh, to, um, uh, to see if, if the current study they're doing shows that this works. If it does, it's, that's at least something promising coming down the line. Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
I do have a question for Jason though.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcourt. You don't have to run. Um, so Monday I asked you about, um, publicizing, publicizing any home remedies and stuff, which I did find out, I think the gargling salt water was not effective. But, um, I don't know, I've, I've seen a couple posts on, that the hospital has on Facebook. Is, my understanding is because there is no, um, vaccination or, you know, at this time, any kind of medication that's gonna cure it or help, is to get it out to the public, maybe treat it as, as a flu, treat your symptoms. I mean, you can't cure it, if you get it, you, you've got it. Unless you're, you're in the, the category of the people that are more susceptible to it. But maybe a notice to the public that, you know, if you do get it, um, you know, your precautions would be your vitamins and, and healthy living is, it's gonna, you treat it like a flu, treat the symptoms of the flu unless you get to a certain point that it is critical.
You bet.
Do you have anything like that available for the public?
We, and, and I apologize that we hadn't gotten that done to this point. We have been working with medical staff and coming up with all of our discharge, um, directions or instructions for people that come through the drive-through. Um, we can, we can come up with something very general for treating symptoms and we can put it out there today.
And I appreciate that because we can't control the hysteria and the panic over the mass buying and things like that. But for people to understand that, um, you know, we do have a population at risk. But if you don't fit into that bracket, that if you do get sick, the biggest thing is stay home. You know, just stay home and wash your hands and be healthy.
Yes, sir.
Is re- reiterating that to the public.
One thing that we did at the hospital on Tuesday, I believe, was it Tuesday or Wednesday? We initiated our, um, emergency incident command system. And so on a daily basis, we're bringing our various, um, posts together for, for updates and for new deliverables so that we are pretty agile with this thing as we go. Um, any new things that come up there, we can also notify, uh, commission. You can notify, we can put new things out on the, uh, out on the Facebook and internet and things like that as appropriate as well, so we can definitely do that.
One of the things I, the public, I would like the public to understand that have small children that get sick, um, that aren't allowed, if they're having flu-like symptoms and they're not allowed to go into the clinic and they're being treated out in their vehicles, that they understand that, that, you know, and even though they are small chil- children, there are protocols you have to go through. For one, to protect the children and for other, you have long-term care there, so you have to make sure that these people are protected and then not to be offended, that they're not allowed to go in. And I know that we're having a few instances of that and I'm sorry that they're offended. However, we're treating this different, it's not as though it's a regular flu season. And so that they understand that there is a protocol that's being used and not to take it personally. And yes, we're sorry that their children are sick, but, um, this is, you know, we're doing this to protect everyone.
And that's very true, we're trying to protect the patient as well as our employees and the long-term care. This virus, uh, I, I can't remember the exact numbers, it can live on flat surfaces, hard surfaces for quite a while. Um, and so just coming in contact with touch and then, uh, it, it can infect that way. And so, hopefully we can, we're providing enough distance. We hate that because customer service is close, especially in small towns, we're close. Um, we know our neighbors maybe a little bit too closely. Um, but in, in our efforts, we're trying to keep everybody safe. There will be a time in the near future where we'll be able to close that gap again and we'll be able to bring everybody through. Um, now, we're still gonna have to take precautions at the end of this. I think this is an eye-opening experience for all of us, of some of our vulnerabilities. Um, so there's gonna be precautions going forward and changes in, in protocols. But there will be a time that we can bring our neighbors close to us again and bring our loved ones back. Um, but for this time, we're trying to protect everyone involved. Patient, parents, uh, long-term care, employees, uh, just so that we can continue on. Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely.
And, and we hope not to offend. And if I, if I have offended anyone or if our staff has offended anyone, please reach out to us. Um, we are not meaning to offend by any means. Um, we do have protocols, we have guidelines, we have things that we are trying to follow as closely as possible. Um, and we just hope that we don't infuriate or cause problems.
This is gonna be rhetorical, hospitals are never equipped for this, right? You don't have a thousand ventilators, a thousand masks, ten thousand of this. Because there was some concern expressed by, uh, some residents and they wanted to know how many ventilators, how many masks in our local hospital. And they went on and on, it was very articulate. And I answered and I said, there's not one hospital that is re- maybe the ships, you know, that they bring to docks aren't prepared for something like this. But I, you know, I think that sometimes people are looking to blame. And there's no blame in this, it's, it's a matter of, okay, let's go ahead and move forward and let's get done what we need to. And then at the end, let's summarize everything, let's see our strengths, let's see our weaknesses, build our weaknesses up, building on our strengths, it's, it's a pretty simple situation.
You are very correct, I agree with everything you said.
So, on that, and that's, that's, you know, absolutely right, is a lot of people wanna blame, you know, it's politics, it's this, it's that, it's what, and they don't understand the closing of the businesses and whatnot. It's like, why, you know, this is just mass hysteria. But we have to look at it and get it out to the public that this is how you contain something. Is it's gonna cause an inconvenience, it is gonna have impacts. But in order to contain it and stop it in the fastest possible way to deal with it in the future and get on to a normal life, is we have to isolate and stay away to not spread it. Because the more people, you know, wandering around, the more likely it is to spread to become even a bigger pandemic. So, you know, just be patient and bear with everybody and, and share with your friends and neighbors that this is the only way we can actually deal with this, is just to self-isolate. And I, I just wanna add, you know, I'm rambling, but watched a YouTube video this morning and it's called How to See Germs Spread in a Coronavirus. And if you don't understand how the germs spread, this is really interesting. He used, um, young children, uh, to spread a powder that shows up in, in black light to show exactly how germs really do spread. And it really gives a new meaning to washing your hands and cleanliness and, and whatnot. So, you get a chance, like I said, it's called How to Spread, or How Do Germs Spread? It's really interesting.
And in washing your hands, water is only a portion of that, soap is only a portion of it. The friction is
And the length.
Very important, and the length is very important. Make sure you're getting friction, don't just soap on and let your hands run under the water. It may not get to all the cracks and crevices.
And that, he showed that too. Do you think you wash your hands good?
Friction's important in that, in that case.
Sounds like y'all wanna be teachers.
Common sense.
Anything else?
No, thank you, Jason.
Thank you and thank you for your support and if you need any from the hos- anything from the hospital, let us know.
We'll get through it.
All righty. So, do we have any more public comment?
Anybody have any ideas? I mean, we're, we're open to ideas.
I, I'd like to ask the, should Ron come up? He's the, uh, emergency managers, the equipment that was brought up. And that I know you've been working with the state to place an order. Uh, we're, we're working, or he's working pretty diligently to, to get equipment and supplies through the state. So, it is a continued effort.
Ron, don't we have some supplies in our list of trailers that we have?
Ron, for the record, uh, we believe so, we're gonna do an inventory on that tomorrow. Uh, see exactly what we've got there. The, uh, orders that was placed by the, uh, health nurse, the ambulance service, Leander County, uh, emergency manager for the sheriff's office, uh, communicated with them today, they should be here sometime this afternoon. Uh, and I believe they're gonna drop the orders off where they were ordered from. Okay, so, they may not be here this afternoon, they, when I talked to Emily, she said that they were, uh, in a snowstorm, pretty bad, so they were trying to get the trucks and I told her to take her time, make sure she got here. So, that's been done at this point. Um, I did receive, uh, from D E M, the, uh, inventory list or like, uh, Jason stated, if they needed more. I do have the forms, uh, Brandy has the forms. Uh, I'll make sure Keith, you get the forms. Uh, they have to be filled out, returned, signed and sent in, so that's where we're kinda at at this point. Um, I think I, I made a, uh, went downtown this morning, the grocery stores seem to have sufficient food in them. Uh, they are lacking, as we know with the toilet paper, the paper tissues, uh, and the breads, for some reason, the breads are down, but other than that, the, the eggs were, one store didn't have eggs, another one did. So, if the public calls, they need something, they need to check both places. But they're only limited, both places are limited to how mu- how many items you're taking, so. So. Would you, uh, address some of the scams that are going on yesterday in Spring Creek? Yes. Down in Vegas? The, it was reported to me yesterday, uh, and I confirmed this. In the Spring Creek area, the Elko area, there were people dressed up as, they were saying they were officials for the medic, state medical and they was going around the houses wanting to do a swab on the people, um, to check for this coronavirus. And they were trying to get into the house, they wouldn't do it outside, so they wanted inside the house. They were scamming people. So, uh, the sheriff over there put the word out. Um, I in turn put the word out also. Uh, we haven't had it here, but that was in Elko. So, if we do get a scam like that, somebody comes to your house, they're not who they say they are, people. You know, we're not running around, we don't have the swabs, so I got Q-tips.
Ron, did anybody let them in?
There was some that let them in, yeah, that's how they found out about it.
And did, I mean, did they rob them or did what?
No, they, I think what they were doing, and I don't know for sure, but if that happened in this town, I would say they're scamming your, or not scamming you because they're not asking for nothing but a swab, but they're casing your place.
Yep.
They're in there seeing what you got in, in plain view. So, don't let them in your house, you don't know them, uh, call law enforcement. Somebody comes up and says, we're doing this, they, huh, stay right out here on the street, I'm gonna get some help here. And they'll be gone, get a license plate number, get a description of them and, and we'll definitely check them out. Any other questions? Business as usual for us?
How you feeling?
Just, uh, feeling great, baby. Just a little note on the sheriff's office side, we did, uh, stop all fingerprinting, uh, for CCW, stuff like that. Uh, what we're trying to do is, is, uh, our office staff has young youngsters, young babies, new babies. So, we're kinda limiting the access to our admin. Uh, so there's a, there's a few issues that we're dealing with over there that, uh, will help everybody out. But a lot of them are not coming in, it'll be pass-throughs, if they need notaries or stuff like that, uh, it'll be through our pass-throughs, so we'll take care of all that. But the fingerprinting at this point is done unless it's an arrest and unfollowed. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith, I, I need to address the commissioners and tell them what the powers of the county health board are.
He needs, he needs to address the commissioners and explain the powers of the county health board? Okay.
Okay. Briefly, uh, number one, and this is under NRS four three nine point three six zero. One is a bait nuisance, nuisance in, in the county, but there are, we're not, we're not dealing with that. Number two, establish and maintain an isolation hospital or quarantine station when necessary for the isolation or quarantine of a person or a group of persons. Three, restrain, quarantine and disinfect any person or group of persons sick with or exposed to any contagious or infectious disease that is dangerous to the public health. That, that's applicable. Number three, restrain, quarantine and disinfect any person or group of persons sick with or exposed to any contagious or infectious disease that is dangerous to the public health. Uh, four, and this is what I suggest we do, uh, appoint quarantine officers when necessary to enforce a quarantine. And this is important, shall provide whatever medicines, disinfectants and provisions which may be required, shall arrange for the payment of all debt or charges incurred for any funds available. So, that, those are the pertinent parts and the county health nurse has the duty or the power what you, what you give it to her to make an appointment of a deputy county health officer. I know Brandy wanted to appoint a doctor, uh, in her stead, but it is not a gent dies for her to step down and a doctor to come in. So, I would recommend that the county health board, or the county, at, at, the county commissioners by and through the county health board, give her approval to appoint a deputy county health officer. And for this county health board to appoint a quarantine officer if it becomes necessary, but we need to have one in place if it becomes necessary. So, those are the two things and, and provide medication and stuff. Those are the pertinent thing, pertinent things and the important things you need to know for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith? It's four three oh point three six zero. Could you maybe have, um, Lakin or Heidi or Shannon, whoever, maybe print out this?
The statute?
Statute first. Four three nine point three six zero.
Oh, wait, you did say nine now.
It's four three nine. Four three nine point three six zero.
So, did Ted stated that the public health nurse and then who, she elect- elected to appoint? Would have the power?
A deputy county health officer and a quarantine officer.
Right, would have the, the power to quarantine if needed, this county? Do we think that should take place without the consent of this board? I'm just throwing that by other commissioners. I mean, if we're going to go to such, I mean, an extreme like that, if to say it is, is it needed, should we not be clued in on that and have a say in it as well? Rather than leaving it to two individuals? And that's all on that, what do you guys feel about that?
I, I agree with you on that, Brian.
Thanks, Keith.
So, and I, and I agree, um, so, in, like in this case with her being out ill, is there someone that we need to put in her place in the case?
Right, well, I, I think, I'd like to see the sheriff's part of it as well.
That's just fine with me.
I think a deputy health officer would be in line, definitely, like you said, with Brandy out ill, um, somebody to step in.
Did Brandy have somebody in mind, Keith?
Yes, she, uh, earlier today she spoke, we spoke, she was thinking of, uh, Dr. Peters. That, that was gonna be her, uh, request or nomination at this meeting.
So, let me ask you this, Keith, um, so, we have a contract with Dr. Peters for what?
He, he's currently the medical officer for community health.
So, it would kinda maybe stand to reason that we just ask?
I couldn't hear it.
Uh, I was asking, Keith, we have a contract with Dr. Peters, I wasn't sure what that was for and it's- I was asking, Keith, we have a contract with Dr. Peters. I wasn't sure what that was for, and it's with the community health. So I think it would make sense if we could ask Dr. Peters if he would like to be the deputy health officer.
It's, it's been discussed. Brandy and he, Brandy and he discussed it last night, and this morning. And she did tell me he is willing to step into that position as well.
So do we need a motion for that?
Do we need a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, second Ron.
I'll make a motion to hire Doc Peters.
Actually, Ron did.
Assistant for this virus deal.
What he said.
Yeah. Ron is a voting member on this board, so I seconded.
All to him. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ron, number first.
Patsy said aye.
And who seconded?
I did.
And Art and I did it.
So the other thing would be a quarantine officer, and do we want one?
I, I believe, I believe once we get to the point of a quarantine officer, we would probably look at having an emergency meeting and discuss the quarantine officer and any procedures that we would put into place if, if we get to that point.
Right.
I agree.
And shouldn't that, the quarantine officer, that should be a medical staff people, right?
Yeah, I would think so.
I would think so. We, we have that.
Sheriff.
Your job, Ron.
Repeat that, please, Ted.
I believe, I recommend the sheriff.
And I agree with that.
He doesn't even have a bullet in his gun. Robert keeps it in his pocket.
Whatever we need, it's, I'm not opposed to any of the folks.
Touching you, Ron. Hi. Don McCrory for the record. The question that I have is if there is a quarantine and there's chaos in the town, we really want our sheriff involved in the quarantine or taking care of the people that are in town?
He'd be involved.
I think it's twofold.
Well, I think it is twofold, but that's where.
He's the law.
He would be the one to enforce it.
Right, but if there's chaos, he should be out in the public, not stuck with just the quarantine part of it.
I know, but Robert, he, he also has Robert, if he.
Right. So that's just a point I wanted to bring up, because if, if we're talking craziness happening because there's a quarantine, I would feel better knowing that he's on the streets, kinda calming people.
Let me, let me address, let me address your concern. And this is how I look at it. We make a recommendation every year on a burn ban. We've never had to be forceful with that. I mean, we have agreements. So I think that this town will pull together. I mean, look at Mark and Raymond, and people are being orderly in the stores. They're not fighting. So.
Yeah, just a point.
And I don't think the quarantine officer would have to be with that person twenty-four seven.
Right.
Exactly.
See what I'm saying? And I think what's more important than that is we need to have a place to quarantine them at. So this is something that, as a board and as a county, we need to look at. Where are we gonna put these people if we have to quarantine them? And, and it needs to be somewhere where I think the medical staff would be close to their, the hospitals as well, I think. And it's just a thought, because I know that somebody brought that up, so.
Okay, can I make a comment on that? Is, and you're right, it's, it's something that needs to be addressed, but it's also something that, you know, does go through our L P C, because it is the, the local emergency planning commission, you know, is working with that. As I just spoke with Mr. Klein earlier before the meeting about possibly getting the school more involved with the L P C program, is, you know, is working with the schools as well. We're, we're a little behind the eight ball on some of these things because of, you know, you just get complacent, and you don't think anything's gonna happen. But it's happening now, and it's a, a learning curve, so.
Years ago when I sat on L P C, there was a discussion as far as quarantine or like mass mobilization site. We looked at Civic Center, we looked at the high school because they have kitchens. We brought in all those cots.
Mormon church was another one?
Yeah, exactly. So it's.
And we have all of that stuff.
Right.
That stuff is available to us, but, and this could get, this could get nuts. I'm not gonna say it isn't. But that's why we need to have a place. And, and my recommendations at this point are, I guess it would be something we spoke about. We have the civic center shut down, and if we needed that, that would be my recommendation, because it's close to the clinic. It's easy to secure. We have everything we need in there. And it's large enough that we can put people in it if we need to. So, you know, it was mentioned in here that we needed a quarantine spot. I know that other places throughout the state that I've talked to have used buildings like the Civic Center that have been not used for a while. So they've opened those up or made them available. And I just think we need to have a plan. And that, that would be my recommendation at this point in time, because it is a county building, it is closed down. It's clean. We have everything we need right there. Pretty easy to dis- disinfect too. I mean, just a big square building. Get in there and clean it out. And we could control that building. It's hard to control the church or some of these other places. But just a thought, speaking for.
We, several years back, Ron, I'm sure you remember, we bought that mobile, the blue mobile decontamination hospital unit.
That tent that we use at the pod?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah. It's got separated rooms, it's got water availability, hot water.
It's small.
But it, but I'm just saying it's a way to, to move people out of.
Move them through there into this.
Yes.
To do that, like the decant contamination like we do on, on a hazmat incident.
So I, I just want a little bit of clarification, Ron. You, you mentioned it, and maybe sharing it with Dawn. My understanding, maybe the quarantine officer would be in conjunction with, with the board, deciding if we wanna quarantine. And I think the quarantine officer is the one that basically implements the quarantine, which to me would make sense that law enforcement is the one that would, would enforce the quarantine, to be able to go to homes or whatever facilities. So I think that's why it really does make sense to have our sheriff as the quarantine officer.
We can support the quarantine, but I'm not gonna be the one that says you're getting quarantined. It has to be a medical staff.
Well, per the advice of the.
You know, we can work with them.
Right, but, and whether it's medical staffers or not, but you would also be the one to support or to enforce it. If, if it's, if it's declared mandatory quarantine.
Excuse me, commissioner?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ted.
A quarantine officer enforces the quarantine. They don't decide who is to be quarantined. They enforce the quarantine.
Made by the doctor or whatever.
Right.
Yeah, good, we're going with that.
So we need somebody, like, and I believe what Judy's saying is accurate. We need somebody with enforcement responsibility and background.
Okay, Ted.
Robert will do that.
Is a quarantine officer different than what Dr. Peters would be doing?
Yes.
Do we need, do we need to point, appoint a quarantine officer today?
I, I would, yes, because otherwise we'd have to, we'd have to get an emergency meeting of the board. And you can appoint more than one quarantine officer. I would suggest you appoint one or more quarantine officers today if the need arises, and one or two quarantine stations today if the need arises.
Okay. Appoint, appoint a quarantine officer.
So I'll make a motion that we appoint Sheriff Hunger as our quarantine officer.
I'll second.
One favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed.
Now, my next question would be, Ron, to have a second.
You need it. Could, could, could it be my designee? In other words, if, if the undersheriff is out, then my sergeant could do it, or one of my deputies? The order comes from you.
No, you have to appoint, you have to appoint the quarantine officers. If there are more than one, you should appoint them today.
Does it have to be an individual, or can I just use the sheriff department, Ted?
It says officers.
Officers?
It said, yes, officer with an S. So you can appoint, you could appoint three or four of your sheriff's department officers as quarantine officers today.
Do we have to get specific names, or could we just blanket it and say our sheriff's deputies?
The kind of gray area, don't know. It says quarantine officers.
Well.
Ron, you have a few names?
Well, yeah, I would think that I would like to visit with the undersheriff, but my first thought would be the, would be the supervisory staff of the patrol division.
Yeah, the public has the right to know who they're gonna be.
And I'll tell you who they are. If that's what you want, it would be the undersheriff, Robert Quick, Sergeant Joe Jones, Corporal, boy, I just lost my train of thought.
Rochester Campbell.
Would be that. And Johnny Rochester. Cause I got supervisors on twenty-four seven, or try to. So if something come down and, and we happen to be out of town, or whatever the case may be, we're unavailable, and they'll supervise you to handle it.
Good, good, good enough for me.
Okay, undersheriff Quick, Sergeant Jones, Corporal Campbell, and Corporal Rochester?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to appoint.
Have a question. Hey Ted, if, so let's say we declare, we declare a state of emergency for a county, and we go into like manita- mandatory lockdown, quarantine, would those people that we're appointing today have the authority to do that without a majority of this board, or would it be a liaison with this board?
They would liaison with the board, because they can't, they can't call for a quarantine. They can only enforce a quarantine.
So I'll make that. Yes, yes.
Hello, yes, I have a question.
Okay.
So, we're in those kind of, we're quarantining a whole area. How about an officer from the south?
I would correct that. I'd also put Corporal Lowell down for the southern end. And thank you, Patsy, for that.
Yeah. So can we do, go five then, or do we wanna do three and one?
Go the whole department.
Can we do it, Ted?
Okay. Well, I know that, but Ted wants to.
Yes, it says officer.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint undersheriff Robert Quick, Sergeant Jo- Joe Jones, Corporal Gary Campbell, Corporal John Rochester, and Corporal.
Dennis Lowell.
Dennis Lowell. As additional quarantine officers for the hospital board? Or, I mean, Health Board, sorry.
Or to quarantine board.
The quarantine officers.
I'll second that motion.
Here's my question. Now, obviously, you're not a doctor. You're not gonna walk up to somebody and say, hey, you're sick, you gotta go. You need that from a doctor. The medical staff would be, I would say, would be the ones that's gonna put somebody in quarantine. So do we need to establish a protocols, Ted?
Art, I think what happens is, we, we decide if there's a quarantine, and then.
Well, they can, but, but it's the, the county board of health and the county health officer that, that does all this, that decides if there's a quarantine or not.
So Brandy and Dr. Peters are gonna know who is sick and who isn't, and they'll just tell you, hey, this is a good idea. I think we need to do this. Okay, I got it.
So then what did you second?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're all in favor?
I don't.
Aye. Aye, hold.
We don't.
Do we have any more public comment? All right.
Come on up here.
You have to, yeah, state your name up here, please.
Dave Carrer, Battle Mountain Chairman for the tribe.
I did.
Or the band, or you guys. So, you know, we're partnerships with you, at least that's the way I feel, you know, we're all in this together. So that's, we're gonna be starting to do stuff probably upon council decision tonight, just like you, we have a board. So what our suggestion is probably gonna be is to limit, so we're gonna probably shut down most of our office, and we're gonna just offer pertinent services to, and along with the store, we're, we're trying to come up with different game plans, different scenarios. We're gonna decide what direction we're gonna go. Like, maybe one person is assigned to shopping, and they're fully suited up, and something like that, or maybe even cut a window for a drive-through if they want something. You know, we're trying to come up with different solutions. And we're trying to tail in, you know, we'd really like, if you guys had like a protocol of how we're gonna handle it from A to Z. So would that be, if somebody got sick, we got them over the phone, then somebody checked them out and went through that process to the medical? You know, if we had like an A to Z type of thing to follow. So we don't, we, we don't wanna get anybody else infected if it ever came to that, like we're discussing, you know, with quarantines. Who would be that person? What, what would be the protocol? You know, I don't know, the hospital says, okay, this is exactly what we're doing, and we're gonna go to the quarantine station for now to get you checked out, or I, I don't know exactly how all that's gonna play out. So I guess with the hospital and with the sheriff and what we're deciding today, if we could get something like that put out on an email, so I could put, put that out to our community, so we're all informed and we're all on the same page. Cause we are, probably tonight, we're probably gonna send off, we're probably gonna declare state of emergency on this person. I know eleven other tribes in the state of Nevada has already declared it. We met with sisalak a little bit on the telephone yesterday. So we're gonna be probably all heading that direction for the, their tribe. So if there's any, like FEMA and stuff like that, if we need to start applying for some of them programs, then we could do that at this point in time. I just kinda wanted to let you know kind of the direction that we're gonna be heading. So, you know, it's no surprise, and we don't wanna step on each other's toes, and if we need to collaborate together, you know, we could get with our staff, Ron, or what have you, so.
So I think that Brandy and Dr. Peters are gonna be the main point of contact for this to begin with. So our health, our public health nurse and Dr. Peters, so it's gonna be the main point of contact to start rolling that out.
Yeah, if we could get included on some of them emails, I'm, I'm sure.
And I think get with Keith as well, for some of that information.
Yeah, if we could get that just streaming to the emails, that'd be perfect, and we know kind of what Leander County's doing. And then we'll try to keep Keith and maybe Sadie or somebody involved on the direction that we're gonna be heading. So we, we just don't wanna separate and, you know, we still wanna be together, directly together.
Yes, yeah, no, no, I get that. And so, yeah, you're making sure that you make a point of contact with Keith, so we can get Brandy those, that, those email addresses and things like that, so she knows that if something goes out, that you're on that list as well.
Perfect, is we, we feel, you know, we're, we're in this all together. There's no separates.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you, Davey.
If there's anything we can do, get to us.
So we have any more public comment?
Michelle Matthews with Nevada Gold Mines Cortez. Today, we just wanted to come in and provide a quick update as to where, where we've been going in the process, to protect our employees and the community at the same time. Starting Thursday, we initiated, actually, a couple weeks ago, we started a target action response plan. We have reached a, at a level three within our action plan, which now places us to where we are limiting our personnel on site and trying to, we're in the process of actually eliminating our buses. So we have not said that employees are not allowed to come to work. Just more of those that aren't essential to operational functions. At this moment, those that aren't essential to operational functions, they can, they are working from town offices. We have, for crew members that have been working, that are still working out on site, they are being transitioned to light vehicles with a max of four personnel per light vehicle and eight per van for transportation purposes. Procedures have been put in place for disinfection of trucks, vans, equipment. Daily communications are going out to our teams, out to all of our employees as to the status of the virus and the status within Nevada Gold Mines. So our overall goal is to try and protect our employees and the community, so we're not continuing to spread it even further due to our close working abilities. We are limiting all meetings to the less than ten personnel. We are limiting all meetings to the less than ten personnel and maintaining our space distances.
Did you work at Renow?
I did.
Okay, I knew, okay. I knew, I knew you from somewhere.
That'd, that'd be several years ago.
Thank you.
So, do we have any other public comment? Thank you so much, thank you for that.
Anything else, Keith?
I, I don't, I, I think we've, uh, I think we've covered everything, um, we, we've got a, a plan in place.
Keith?
Yeah.
We need to establish an isolation hospital or quarantine station. If needed, we should do one for Gilman Springs, Kingston, Austin area, and one for Battle Mountain. You can call it a isolation hospital or a quarantine station. But you need to, like the civic center came up, good idea, uh, but you need to establish it now.
Kathy, I have a question for you.
Okay, so, um, I know for, um, give me one second, so it was my train of thought, please. So for the isolation hospital, um, where's Ron again? Oh, there he is. Um, as far as the isolation hospital using the Battle Mountain, the, the civic center.
That's what I would say.
Well, and that's, well, that would make the most common sense considering that it's adjustment to the hospital too.
And if you would like, uh, I thought about this earlier, uh, in Kingston, that old medical building, that new medical building that they have down there.
Okay.
For that one. Austin, I'm not sure about, and could we incorporate, uh, Gilman Springs with Kingston?
I would-
Cause you're all these miles apart.
Yes, you can.
Oh, yes, we can, so, so Kingston and Gilman Springs. Um, let me ask Jason something real quick. Jason, would you please come here, please? Sorry, um, so for the, um, Kingston area, we were wondering if we can use that, your guys' medical building, um, for, if we had to do an isolation hospital, is that something that is an option?
I think that's an opportunity, there's still a few different things there that we'd have to move around cause this, the examination tables and everything's still in place.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
But if we got in there, we could get things moved around where we could utilize that?
I think that would be an opportunity, yeah.
Okay, so, all right, just one second, okay, go ahead.
Kathy, uh, um, can you hear something? Yeah, yes, can I? So, uh, we have that blue thing, could that be used for anything in regards to quarantine?
Can you maybe kinda move back away from the, the speaker?
It's hard, I'm sorry, it's hard to understand you guys, I know that is-
Can you hear me now?
So, try that again, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, a little better, yes.
Okay, so we have that blue thing, did the county or the hospital purchase a few years ago? Could that be used for any kind of quarantine?
Oh, is that the same thing that Ron's talking about, okay, so we have that same, is that-
Okay, good, I, I did not hear it, sorry.
She, what's, what she's saying is that blue, the thing that Keith was just talking about?
That's not a, an Austin.
I don't think that would work for a quarantine center.
I don't know what it is, so I don't know.
Why-
It's a decam- it's a decan- uh, uh-
It's a decontamination.
Thank you, yes.
Okay.
That's all it is.
So for Austin was what we're look-
For Austin, if you're looking for a quarantine, it's gotta be somewhere where they can stay for a prolonged period of time, I believe.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be.
Why, why couldn't, why couldn't we use the clinic in Austin?
Are you-
Or the school.
The school, yeah.
Or the school, the school would, is a very good idea, so, is the school accept?
If you have a graduate session and you must find the record, so the school certainly-
Yeah, one second, one second, so.
The, the school certainly has kitchen, restroom facilities, um, that we could, uh, we have a trailer behind the school. I haven't been in that trailer to know if that has restrooms in it, but in the building itself, we certainly do have, uh, kitchen and restrooms that could, could be utilized for a long term.
Okay, thank you, uh, go ahead, Patsy.
Which one can you do well, the town hall? You can use maybe the clinic in Kingston and the town hall in Austin?
The town hall.
The town hall in Austin?
There's no kitchen facility.
That's, that's church, I think, yeah.
Yeah, there's no kitchen in that, so we were, on the school side, we were looking for the school because it has the bathrooms and the kitchen in it. Is that something that will work with you guys?
Yeah.
Did you say, okay, all right, thank you. So, um, for the motion would be the, for the isolation hospitals, and for Battle Mountain would be the civic center, for Kingston and Gilman Springs would be the medical building, and for Austin could be the high school.
Okay, so, um, couple questions. For, for those facilities, now the, um, how, how fast could they be stocked and, I mean, what's our, do we need to worry about timeline or how fast things can be set up? Just curious. Twenty-four hours. I'm gonna make a motion that for isolation hospitals, um, we assign Battle Mountain, uh, would be the civic center. Uh, Gilman Springs, Kingston would be the medical building in Kingston, and Austin will be the high school. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Now, do we need, um, MOUs or anything for the hospital and the schools to utilize those?
I'm sorry, I'm-
Would we need an MOU for agreement for utilizing those?
I can get with Russ and-
If you send the sheriff, we're not gonna say no.
They told you, I didn't have a vote. I think you'd only need one for the school district, but it should be cause the other buildings are county buildings.
No, actually, the old building is-
Oh, and Kingston would be hospital.
It belongs to the hospital.
So I'd like to add to my motion, um, that if we do, or, or request maybe Keith get with, with the hospital and the school to get an MOU and authorizing to sign.
Second.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Post, all right.
Patsy, did she hear that? Did Patsy vote?
She didn't.
I didn't hear, I, I-
Patsy, did you hear all of that?
I, I'm sorry, I did not.
Patsy, I just, we made the motion and voted to approve the civic center for Battle Mountain, the medical building in Kingston, for Kingston, Austin, and the high school for, or Kingston, Gilman Springs, I'm sorry, and then the high school for Austin. And then I also asked that Keith get an MOU with the school and the hospital for those two buildings down south and authorized him to sign.
Okay, so your last one, how are you doing? Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're good?
Did Patsy vote?
Oh, did you, um,
Well, we have a quorum anyway, Ron, you didn't vote, but you can know which.
But for the record, for the record.
Yes.
So, so voting on that, um, I, uh, Brian seconded that, and then all in fight, favor, so do you wanna go ahead and vote on that?
Are you talking, ready?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I.
Okay, just making sure, all right, so unanimous, all right.
I do have one question though, is the Kingston medical building doesn't have a kitchen facility, does it?
No kitchen, uh, no shower, it's, it's got, you know, a hundred and ten-
It's got a fridge and a seat, but not, and a microwave, but that.
And the two bathrooms, but.
I guess if it came down to something, we'd have to provide food, which is no problem, so.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you. Any, any more public comment?
I have a public comment.
Please.
I barely received this, and I figure I probably should read it to you. And you guys have probably received it on your emails around somewhere too. Do you think it's wise to share it now?
It's out there now.
Yeah.
Might as well.
Well, it says it's for immediate release, this is from,
Oh, for Andy?
This comes from Rob Stokes, county manager in Elko. Um, Elko receives the first pro- positive case of COVID nineteen. Elko County was notified Wednesday by the Nevada Department of Public and Behavioral Health of the first positive case of COVID nineteen, novel coronavirus, uh, in the county. This case is a female in her thirties who has no underlying medical condition. Um, after feeling symptoms, the patient was tested on March sixteen, twenty twenty, and has been in self-isolation since being tested. The state is contacted, the state is contact tracing and monitoring the patient and family in, in the home. While this is a serious public health threat, the immediate risk to the general public in Elko County is considerably low. Uh, there have been no positive COVID nineteen cases reported in Humboldt, Lander, Eureka, or White Pine counties.
Thank you.
Thanks. Minute by minute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, oh, I, I was just gonna say, I, I believe we've covered our, our agenda items, I, I, I hope that the board feels completely updated. We'll, we'll continue to do updates as needed, we have a plan in place. I met with, uh, the sheriff, um, and the public works director yesterday, and, and we have plans in place to maintain the water supplies as well as the, um, the sewer systems, uh, within the county. And like I said, we, we, we met yesterday and we talked about that, the senior center, the senior, um, the seniors in the, in the county, and we will continue to work on plans, and, you know, it's a living document, we will continue to update those and, um, keep the communities, uh, sa- as safe as we can.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you.
Bye.
Please do, please do. Please do that, and give them the number and they just call in, yeah, would you do that for us, please?
Thanks.